This is Mayor Shave and it's Wednesday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, at six-thirty P.M., and I call the Aberdeen City Council meeting to order. Deputy City Clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Gaykin?
Here.
Cashman? Warren?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Carachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Cedar? Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
Will you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the, that we have to take care of is nominating and electing a pro-TAM council president. And I will open the floor to nominations.
I nominate Deanne Shaw.
I second it.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Okay, I'll close the nominations. Deanne, it's unanimous. I don't think a vote is even necessary.
Well, thank you, I think. Nobody else wants to do this. So, the first order of business, Mayor Shave, I would ask that the council president, Katie Cashman, and council members, John Mackey and Stan Cedar be excused. I so move.
Motion was made and seconded to excuse our absent council members tonight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the agenda.
So, there's a couple of changes to the agenda that we would like to make. The amended agenda was issued and it adds a report from our homeless committee under special agenda items number one. And I would also move to move the last item on the agenda, which is a resolution to adopt and execute the twenty-three-twenty-five collective bargaining agreement with ASME. I would move to move that right after staff reports before item number ten.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Motion?
Do you have a second?
Was there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Council President, pro-TAM, Deanne Shaw. I also have an appointment. That will be the last thing on the agenda. Under, behind, right, right, right before adjournment.
I move that we add an appointment to the museum board. Is that correct to the?
That's correct.
Agenda before adjournment.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to add an appointment to the museum board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to public comments. Any comments from the public? Anything at all come up to the podium, please? Identify yourself. If you know where, which ward you're in, let us know where you're from.
It's most possible, so sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Rivera, and I live in Hopkiam. I just wanted to just take a moment to introduce myself. I am the new branch manager for the Aberdeen Timberland Library. I started in November. I have over fourteen years of library experience and I'm just so happy to be in Washington and to work in Aberdeen. And I invite you all to come and visit me at the library. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else from the public have anything they want to talk about? Okay? Moving on to the consent agenda. Council President, pro-TAM, Shaw.
Mayor Shave, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to mayor's report. You know, it's been pretty quiet, it seems. I think I'm getting used to having city administrator. But one thing that did come up over the last couple of weeks that was new to me, and I just share this with you, is there was a seat on the Grace Harbor Boundary Review Board up for grabs. And the mayors, which was a nice thing, all of us mayors from Grace Harbor met and talked about it. And we actually tried to get Alma and McCleary to find somebody interested in the seat, because it's dominantly been Western County sitting on them seats, so. But lo and behold, we, we found another Aberdeen person. And what works good is it's a real estate person, Pat Olajue. And so Pat is serving on that board from Aberdeen. Randy Carneth from the county. Rick Lovely from government. What government is Rick Lovely?
Retired.
He's retired.
But he's retired, so okay. Bill Messenger, Ocean Shores, and Roberta Myers from Aberdeen. That have stood on that board. And it's an important seat, although they don't meet very often. Usually only when something comes up like a boundary issue or an exine. But they meet at least once a year. So, anyway, that was all new and I thought I'd share that with you. And that's all I have. Any council reports? Council Mayor Shaw.
I'll just share on behalf of myself and Council President Katie Cashman that we were able to attend the port's annual morning meeting, when I delivered our annual report and shared projects going into the future. And I think the mayor, the mayor was there as well.
Yeah, I was, and I forgot to mention that.
It was a very informative and, and always, always informative, so.
You know, there's a lot of things going on and, and there's a lot of projects that we associate with the port of Grace Harbor in one form or another, big or small. And I think we've got a really good relationship with our port. And there's gonna come one of these days where that port's gonna explode wide open economically. Hopefully, we're gonna be ready for it. Anyway. Any other council reports? Okay. Moving on to staff report. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, I've had another, you know, busy couple of weeks here. And like, what an honor again to serve in the capacity of city administrator. I just wanted to, we're just further working with our contracted financial, financial person who's gonna be working with us and acting as an interim. She's not an interim finance director, but she is assisting us. We are undergoing an audit currently with the state auditor's office. And we also have some year-end financial reports that we have to submit to them as well. So she's really gonna be helpful in that. We've been able to divide those duties among the team. So the team is, we have a very strong team in finance. And so we're really looking forward to, to trying to tackle those things. She's really gonna help us as well. Train our team a little bit on some, some, some things that they've been looking forward to learn. Lastly, I, you know, I just wanted to point out that Deanne had moved up an item from, for the ASME union negotiation. And I really wanted to thank the ASME group. They really worked in good faith to finding, you know, common ground with us and, and common interests. And we were able to negotiate really well with them. So I really wanted to thank them for coming to the table. And so I'm, I'm happy to report that we were able to find, to, to, to come up with an agreement that suits both the city and the employees. But if you have any questions regarding my report, please let me know. I'm happy to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. Any of the directors? Okay. We'll move on to item ten, request.
No, Mayor. This is where we were going to approve the ASME contract.
Yes, thank you.
I would, at this time, move to adopt a resolution and execute the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five collective bargaining agreement with the ASME union.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve of the ASME agreement. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. The agreement is approved.
Will be resolution twenty-two-three dash zero seven.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the Finance Committee.
Okay. We have a request from Finance and Parks and Recreation Director recommending that the city council approve the already budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three John Deere Gator for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and nineteen cents. I move that we approve this.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to approve the request for a new Gator for Parks. It's already in the budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, next we have a request from Finance and the city administrator for the city council to allow the cashier window to be closed on Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, from eight A.M. to twelve P.M. for training. And I move that we accept this.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this, or approve this request. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to Public Safety. Council Member Ross.
Thank you. Public Safety met this evening at five forty-five P.M. and we have one resolution on the agenda. That's it for tonight.
Okay. So I'll move on to Public Works. Council Member Shaw.
Thank you. Public Works met yesterday and we have a few things on the agenda tonight. The first is a public hearing on the proposed transportation benefit district annual project plan for two thousand and twenty-three. I move to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion was made and seconded to open the public hearing on the proposed transportation benefit district project plan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing is open. If anyone in the public wishes to speak on the proposed transportation benefit district annual project plan, come up to the podium, please. Seeing no rush.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
The second item from Public Works is a request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor and the Public Works Director to sign all standard Washington State Department of Transportation agreements relative to obligation and implementation of the systemic pedestrian safety improvements, preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction phases, and authorize the Public Works Department to advertise for qualifications for the preliminary engineering phase and advertise for construction bids. I move we approve this request.
Second. Everybody's got that now.
She did a good job.
That was a lot.
That's like one-stop shopping.
Yeah. Okay, motion was made and seconded to approve this request. There any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
The third item from Public Works is also a mouthful, but here goes. It is a request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor and the Public Works Director to sign all standard Washington State Department of Transportation agreements relative to obligation and implementation of the North Aberdeen Bridge replacement preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction phases, and authorize the Public Works Department to advertise requests for qualifications for the preliminary engineering phase and advertise for construction bids. I move we adopt the report.
Second. Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
So, last week, as you know, we had some visitors and there were some conversations taking place in the community about the North Aberdeen Bridge. And at our Public Works Committee meeting yesterday, we discussed at length what this might look like going forward. The first thing that we wanted to share with everyone, and for the benefit of anyone that might be listening in as well, is that we've known for several years that there, there were some safety issues with that bridge and it has some weight restrictions on it. And so we just, you know, threw our project in the pot and didn't have any idea when we might get funded to replace this bridge. But even when we authorized seeking grants to replace the bridge, in Public Works, we talked about how important it will be to do this project right, that this bigger than just another bridge. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, actually, we've got all but fully funded for the bridge part a lot sooner than was expected. These projects don't get funded as soon as we end up getting funding for this. So the conversation on what it might look like in totality is a little bit ahead of us. But we just would like people to rest assured that we want to do something really special there. And the timeline and what we're approving tonight, the specs that go out for anyone that assists with this project are going to include a requirement to have some public engagement. And we are going to be seeking ideas and, and comments and be holding meetings. And that, that's gonna be taking place. But we certainly didn't want to say no to the funding, but now it's a little bit catching up on what is it really gonna look like. So, that said, so, let's see. The other thing that, that's gonna happen in June. That contract for someone to help us with this is gonna happen in June. And so we just ask everybody to be patient and know that we do want to hear from everyone on what this could look like. So we're funded from the bridge. We just need to know going forward that the plus part of it is gonna be on us. So it's gonna, we need to be creative and find ways to make this something really special. But I think that we also have a really good opportunity to have it be something really positive and, and engage people even beyond or outside of Aberdeen in something that it can, can continue to be a draw for our community. So we just wanted to share that. And if I, some committee members, feel free to chime in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council Member Ellis.
Yeah, Council Member Shaw, President Pro-TAM. Is there, do you know an amount for what the plus would involve? Or is that to be determined?
That's to be determined. That's the part of the public engagement process on what we would like it to look like. And you can't start really attaching numbers until we kind of have a vision on what we might want to try and do there.
I see. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to special items. Council President Pro-TAM Shaw.
I would defer. Did you, did you want to take this, the chair of the homeless committee? Or would you like me to proceed with special items?
I have, it's been requested that. I would like to read this one off, if that's okay.
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. So we have an item from the homelessness response committee recommending that the city council approves a request to authorize a health and sanitation effort citywide. Just to, the unauthorized homeless encampment on the city, city right-of-way property is causing a health and sanitation hazard as well as an immediate hazard. You have this report in front of you. And so some of the structures are blocking roads and thoroughfare, thoroughfare is required to be used by businesses located in the area. So what the request is, the recommendation we're making is the homelessness response committee is recommending to the council to authorize the homelessness response committee to lead an effort to conduct a healthy, a health and sanitation effort of unauthorized encampments as allowed by law and through the guidance of the city's corporate council. I'm sorry, I recognize that was probably. So, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request from the homeless response committee. Second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to approve the request from the homeless response committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, under item number two, we have a request from the Parks and Recreation Director recommending that city council approve the accession of the numerous items, of numerous items into the city's museum collection. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made and seconded to draw, adopt the report. Is there any discussion? I was gonna describe it, but then I didn't. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, we have a request from the Parks and Recreation Director recommending that the city council approve the deaccession of numerous items from the city's museum collection. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? I can't resist. Under discussion, the request to approve the accession is for some new items that have come in, that are being donated to the city. The request for, to approve the deaccession of numerous items is stuff that we have sorted through and we're gonna get rid of. That's what that's all about. Sounds like we're getting something and then we're giving it back or something. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, we have a request from Personnel and the City Administrator recommending that the city council approve the change in reporting structure for the Community Development Director, Finance Director, Fire Chief, Human Resources Director, Parks Director, Public Works Director, and Police Chief. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, under discussion.
I would actually like to amend the wording of the report, just one word. Currently, it says, "The proposed change would have the positions reporting to the mayor and/or city administrator." I would just like to remove the word "or" so that it says, "The proposed change would have the positions reporting to the mayor and the city administrator."
I second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to amend this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Council Member Shaw.
I appreciate the clarification. I think it's a good one. So, but now that we're discussing it, I actually was curious why it, we're doing it to the city administrator and the mayor, because when we adopted the city administrator position, it had department heads reporting to the city administrator and the city administrator reporting to the mayor. So I'm just curious if anyone who is in the Personnel Committee can share, this is essentially a change in the job description for the city administrator.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
The H R Director will answer that.
So we put it as "and/or", in case then, in the event that the city administrator is years down the road, hopefully it doesn't happen, that she's no longer here. We don't have to go back and then reamend everybody's job descriptions in the event that maybe the mayor is here and the city administrator is not. So it would be an "and/or" situation. Either we'll report to the city administrator and the mayor, or just the city administrator.
Right now, everything is written in, in the, in the job description, but it's not captured in Personnel. It's not captured in a lot of those critical documents. And so I found myself in the position to be challenged in the past. And so, or just even in the recent past is. And this would kind of solidify, this would, with this language, the "and/or", that this would solidify my position with the directors.
I, I think I would rather see something that said that the mayor as CEO is within the absence of the city administrator, the mayor as CEO is, is who department has to report to. Because "and/or", you know, ten years from now, you know, what does that mean? And may, would it be, would it accomplish our goal and be more clear to everyone? That I don't get to pick which supervisor to go to based on what answer I might get. But I go to the city administrator, but if the city administrator is on vacation or out of the city, the mayor is our administrator as the CEO. Can we maybe, can we maybe bring this back and to say something like that?
Sure, I can take it back to Personnel Committee, but your motion was changed.
We can make it more clarifying to state, like, in the event that the city administrator is not a big, you know.
Because if that's the intent of the "and/or", I think we can be more clear about that, because I agree with Council Member Morrison. "And/or" just creates some, you know, might, you know, in the scheme of things, might not get you what you want.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I would draw my motion.
Okay.
And, and I wanted to, this is Council Member Ellis.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer as well that in case the mayor is not in town, that the "or" certainly helps people know that, who, who to, who to report to. But, but really, I prefer Deanne's suggestion that it's clarified that department heads report to the city administrator unless that person isn't available.
Thank you, because a smart city administrator is gonna make sure he or she is aligned with the CEO.
Yes.
Do we need to go through? Do we need a motion on the table? That's what I was wanting to ask.
So there was a motion on the table and, and the maker of the motion agreed to withdraw it.
So I move that we refer the matter back to the Personnel Committee. Second.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded to refer this matter back to the Personnel Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Liz? Liz, do you have your hand up for further discussion? Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
There's no further discussion? All in favor of sending this back to the Personnel Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, under item number five, we have a request from Personnel and the Fire Chief recommending that the City Council approve their request to hire lateral firefighter paramedic Will Green at a Step Four based on his experience. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor, under item number six, we have a request from Personnel and the City Administrator recommending that the City Council adopt the job description and classification of prosecuting attorney, and change the deputy corporation counsel's title to prosecuting attorney. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw.
So, I apologize, I think I shared that I got booted off the email for a little bit, and I'm catching up a little bit. So, deputy corporation counsel is mentioned in our, in our charter and in the, in our municipal code. Is what we're adopting tonight, does that capture all of that and make that change clean, so there's no conflict between those different descriptions?
So, we don't currently have an in-house corporation counsel. We are, and she does not oversee Forrest, and so therefore, we have a deputy corporate counsel with really no supervising corporate counsel. So, Forrest is acting in the capacity as a prosecutor. This would just give him the title that he's currently exercising, and it would also, if there's no change in pay or anything of that nature, it's just a title change to reflect what he's currently doing for the city. We don't seek any corporate counsel advice from him.
So, do we need to add prosecuting attorney to the list of jobs that the city administrator oversees?
I believe that we have that, and I believe that it is reflected in the job description as well, that he does, he is within the reporting structure, that he can, he does report to me.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, item number seven is a request from Personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the City Council approve the request to implement experience-based promotions as reported with 5% pay increase to Public Works maintenance workers. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave, item number eight is a request from Personnel and the Fire Chief recommending that the City Council authorize the request for temporary paid assistance from former administrative coordinator Susie Johnson for assistance she will provide during a leave of absence. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Susie.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, Personnel was busy, but we're coming to the end here. Item number nine is a request from Personnel and the Police Chief recommending that the City Council authorize the request for temporary paid assistance from former Deputy Chief Jay State, and for assistance he will provide during the new Deputy Chief transition period. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Jay.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. How's your reading?
Oh, great.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring March 2023 as Red Cross Month. This is a pretty lengthy, so, I'm passing the buck.
I'll read the proclamation portion of it, and I'll hand it back to Mayor Shave. In times of crisis, people in Aberdeen come together to take care for one another. The humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. In 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Aberdeen who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-saving skills through the Red Cross. Through disaster assistance and preparedness, health and safety training, service to armed forces, and biomed in Aberdeen, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers and donors give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like recent home fires and floods, donating essential blood for accidents and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all of, all those who continue to advance the noble agency of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community.
Now, therefore, I, Pete Shave, Mayor of Aberdeen, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Aberdeen, Grace Harbor County, and the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Aberdeen to reach out and continue to support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this first day, the first day of March, the year of our Lord 2023, in the city of Aberdeen, in Grace Harbor County, and the state of Washington. Declare March Red Cross Month. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances or resolutions, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an ordinance, this is the third reading and final passage of Bill number 23-02, an ordinance adopting Section 9.02.130 of the Aberdeen Municipal Code relating to the improper use of the emergency communication system. I move that we pass this ordinance.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to pass the third reading and final passage of Bill number Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ellis?
Aye.
Francie?
Aye.
Gaken?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Tarjini?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Seedorf? Taylor?
Aye.
Motion passes 920. Mr. Mayor, this will be ordinance 6693.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shaw, you have ordinance number 2023?
Thank you. We have item number two, a resolution approving the annual transportation benefit district project plan for the year 2023. I move we approve this resolution. Second.
Motion was made to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Public Works folks for all of the repairs that they make in Aberdeen. When broken sidewalks or busted-up street panels are replaced, it makes such a difference to people who regularly use them. And going forward, we've got, looks like $250,000 earmarked for small projects like that. I, I'd like to encourage us to see if we can double that somehow, so that even more repairs can be made to our aging infrastructure. But thanks for everything that does get done.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
This will be Resolution 2023-08.
Councilmember Shaw, you have another resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works has a resolution setting the date of March 8th for a public hearing to receive comments on the stormwater management action plan. I move we approve this resolution.
Sure.
Motion was made seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw?
Yes, Mayor, we have two actions, an action at our last meeting and an action at this meeting that are worded very similarly, but don't be, there's actually going to be two public hearings regarding stormwater management on March 8th. So, in case you're going through your notes and wondering what we did, we're actually going to have two public hearings.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, the resolution is passed.
This will be Resolution 2023-09.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw, you have another resolution?
Already did that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's followed your court, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is museum board appointment. Let me find this. Nancy Coyle, who's been on the museum board, and for those, for a short while, and for those of you that don't know, she's been leading the way for our museum for a long, long time, with the Friends of Museum. She filled an empty position on the board, just to make sure it got filled, and she said she's so busy that if she can find somebody to take her place, she would do so. She writes, "I wish to thank you for the opportunity of serving on the board of the museum in history. However, I find that I am quite overloaded and don't feel I can commit the time to this position that it deserves. I would like to be replaced before the March meeting. I feel Roy Knott is a strong candidate for my replacement." So, I would entertain a motion to, to accept her resignation and fill the seat with candidate Roy Knott.
I move. My second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to appoint Roy Knott to the city museum board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Believe that's it.
Mayor Shave, I move to adjourn. I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adjourn. If there's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting.